Good evening to the town of Millville and all those people who are in attendance. My name's Jen Callahan. I'm the town administrator and we have a very special presentation here this evening. In advance of our board of selectmen meeting, we have the students from the Blackstone Regional Vocational Technical High School. And we have a very esteemed guest who has been working very closely with our town on our loss of our town hall. It is the instructor for all of these students who are appearing before us who are going to do this great presentation. And Jim Oxtekalanis is from the Engineering Technology Division at Blackstone Valley Tech. And he has been working for many, many weeks with this group of students who are here to make a very important presentation in advance of our town meeting, which is scheduled on November 30th, Wednesday 2016. Jim, I'm gonna let you come up here and be able to just give a little insight on why we have you here this evening, why we've invited you, and then you can lead the students off. Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. I'm Jim Oxtekalanis, drafted instructor at Blackstone Valley Tech. I have my students here. I'm gonna let each one of them introduce themselves as they start to do their presentation. This job came to us several weeks ago where we went out, looked at the site, okay? And we started to look at different ideas of what we could do with the interior. That mainly was our concern, so we did an area study to see what we could fit within the space. Why don't I have the students explain that? Then at that point, we were looking at what would be pleasing to have, to get the public into the building. So that would be the picture that we have up on the screen now showing the exterior. Okay, and the last thing we would like to do, just to make this a good learning experience for the students, I gave them the opportunity where let's really look at what we can do later on in the future and how could we give it good curb appeal from the street. So we started to look at the opposite side of the building from what we have here. And we just came up with design concepts at this point. Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to the students.
Jim, I just spoke with Tim and he thought the better part would be to come up here and you can face the audience and then he'll be able to, unless you need someone to actually control the laptop. So one person there and then the rest up there would be great.
Alright, so I'm Liam Mahoney. I'm a senior in the construction technology shop. And I'm doing the physical work with me and my crew.
Hi, my name's Aiden. I'm a senior in drafting. I've worked on pretty much the floor plans here and some of the exterior plans we have. I'm mostly just gonna, while she introduces herself, I got some papers I wanna pass out to everybody.
Hi, I'm Hannah Keith, a senior in drafting. I also worked on a lot of floor plans and exterior design. So the design right here we have is the new exterior design that we've been working on currently today. Over here on the board, we had two different designs like the last shop week. And we decided the exterior view was better off than the interior view. And Liam can explain that more.
Alright, so when me and my crew first arrived, it was really an old musty kind of seldom-used building. It was turned over to the town of Millville by the Millville American Legion post. And I am, me and my outside job crew have been tasked with renovating it. One of the things to make it accessible to the public is we need a ramp that was non-existent. There's actually about a six-foot step up to get into the building. And as you can see here in our plans, we have a breezeway that we're gonna be constructing. We're gonna dig a foundation, pour a slab of concrete, and then frame it up and have a ramp going downwards. That'll also act as a breezeway, so that way when the main doors opened in the bitter New England winters, you don't have cold air blowing in on the workers inside. We also have plans to widen the windows a few more inches to let in more natural light and give it a more kinda warm, appealing feeling. Do you guys wanna talk about it more?
I think that's pretty much it. And then we also did a lot of exterior designs, like our own designs, so we will show you all the different.
Why don't we go to the floor plan first?
The floor plan first, okay. Well, first we'll show you the floor plan. It's all on your papers as well. So as you can see, it's just a conference room, another like little office room, and two more desks, and two more desks, and more desks right here, and then a reception area right here. And then this would be the main meeting room. And then this would be a break room right here as well. And then you can see all the different dimensions for the breezeway and the slabs and the ramps for the breezeway as well.
So the bar we decided to construct or renovate into the conference room as it was the biggest area that we could use besides the whole open area for the workers. And we decided to keep the kitchen as a break room as it already has most of the appliances that you'll need for a break room and everything. I believe that these, these doors up here for the bathroom, we decided to move down here, I think, is what's on here. I believe that's changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here. And I believe, what else? Oh, and also on this, you guys can look at this if you want, but this has the old breezeway on the inside, which this no longer has. We decided to take that out as you guys, that's what you guys agreed upon, I believe.
If I may go over the floor plans again, so. So like you said, we originally were thinking of having breezeway in the inside. The problem with that is it would be really difficult to frame on the inside. Plus it was not allowed by Mass Building Code for this particular project. And most importantly, as you can see, the footprint on the inside, there's not a whole lot of room to work with. So a breezeway in the inside would be cutting down on worker space, making it really cramped and just wasting a lot of space that could be put to good use. So we're gonna be building on the outside. This portion right here, this was originally a screened patio, but I guess by the American Legion it was boarded up to act as a little storeroom. We can see it right here. So on the current building, this door is coming apart as well as the bottom panels of OSB plywood. Now what our plan is, is to do really rot and damage control. So peel all this stuff off, put on new insulation, new framing members if needed. And really give that TLC. The door is a really makeshift door. It's just made by framing members and plywood, some insulation. So it's, at this point, it's falling apart. Some more concerns we have, there's some parts in the roof that we're gonna be patching. There's just some holes made by animals over the years. And it's mainly in this exterior room right here. So those can be patched, no problem, and the ball's already rolling to get that stuff done. Actually, if we could go back to the floor plan. So right here we have the bathrooms. What some of my crew members did, right here is the women's bathroom. There were actually two stalls. They took out one of the, they took out both stalls and one of the toilets and made it a single as well as the men's room. We also took measurements for the doors and we are gonna be fixing those as they're really damaged and not to our high standards. Do you guys wanna continue?
Yeah, actually, you wanna talk about the exterior? We're gonna start talking about the multiple exterior plans. If nobody has any questions about this? Okay, so we're gonna start talking about the exterior plans here if they.
If they want, actually no. We're gonna show you some views for inside the floor plan. So here we go. This is a rendering that we did in the way beginning when we were starting this process. So you can see like all the different tables, like the chairs and different rooms and all differently. Offices, but the breezeway isn't there yet because this was our first design.
This was a rendering here of having the breezeway on the inside instead, so you could actually see how much space that would be taking up. As those two desks you can see with the computers there would be the receptionists or something like that. And it just took up pretty much almost half of that space.
Just another view of that. That's a conference room, yeah. Another rendering of the inside of the floor plan, a different angle of it. It's all the same, okay.
Okay, so now we're gonna switch over to some exterior concepts that we came up with.
There are, there are you.
If you just, just minimize it. And then on the bottom, at the bottom. We also do have these renderings printed out. If anybody wants them, we can pass them out if you guys do. This is yours, right?
This is my design. So I decided to make it like a one-and-a-half-story building with an open ceiling. So it has columns holding up a flat roof right here with a sign on it. And then I made a big walkway, like a sidewalk to show off where the entrance of the building was. And I just had fun with it and I put some plants in and put some lamps in to make it really more realistic to see how it would look from like the road or like any other views. And then I have some renderings of it, the front rendering.
Different, yeah.
So this is a rendering of the front view with the American flag. And this is what the people would see going past the town hall on the road. And then, and here's another rendering just from like a different angle showing like the sidewalks and the lamps. Showing the back. I did have, I did put a ramp back here, but then I don't think I have a rendering of that, but... Yes, I do actually. So I did put a ramp back here. This is before we had the breezeway idea. So I just put this in the back because I knew that's where the parking lot was gonna be and people would have to go in and out with a ramp, so I put the ramp in the back. So you can, then there's another rendering of it.
Alright, so this was another exterior concept made by one of our other students who wasn't able to show up here tonight. His name was Justin. He started off with, I guess you could say like a kind of fancy design. He decided to stay with the one-story and then just put a nice little roof on it with a little spire on the top. And I believe, I don't know if he put a ramp on the back either, I'm not sure about that, but he decided to go with just a nice little sidewalk that comes down from the parking lot and goes right to the front. And he centered the doors instead of, what this has now is a door on this side, which he decided to center it and put a little arc, like awning over it, just some nice lights and stuff. Yeah, you can go to the rendering somewhere. Or not, I guess. These aren't renderings, but these are just like showing you what it would look like if you were to walk right up to it from the side. And this would also be what you would see driving past it as well. Yeah, that's that one. And then afterwards, I, we do have these all printed out, so I'll pass each design out to you guys. That one already went through, yeah. Underneath that, all those. Sorry, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff open. This one was also designed by another student who was unable to come here tonight. His name's Alex. He decided to go with what I would feel like is a more realistic design. Yeah, as it, it seems like it would be the one that would be like the most cost-effective as nothing, it's nothing too fancy or anything like that. He decided to put the roof over it. He left the door where it was except just made it like a better door. It looks like it might be a sliding door and glass door. And then he added a ramp, a handicap accessible ramp from the front instead of the back, which is what most of the other plans are, so you can have like handicap parking spots in the front. These are some renderings of this. He also put solar panels on the top. I'm not sure that it's the thing you guys want, but it'd be pretty nice. Alright, so that's all of them, right?
No, there's one more, Blake's.
Oh yeah, Blake.
So this is another student who couldn't make it tonight, Blake's design. So he kinda let the same concept as everyone else, a sidewalk on the side going up to the front and then the same building, but he made it like, he cut the walls right here so it'd be, there'd be more room on the sidewalk. And he made lamps and stuff. I'm pretty sure he put a ramp in the back as well like everyone else. Yeah, so this is the front view. He put some benches in.
Yeah, he added a.
He added a ramp as well like everyone else except for Alex, but Alex put his ramp in the front, so.
This was also done, most of these were done before the breezeway idea in the back as well.
Yes. You wanna show some renderings of it?
Yeah, that's his other one.
So there's the front view. So this is the view that people would see driving by and walking up to it, another angle. But he put the sign of the town hall on the side of the building instead of in the front of the building, which is different. And then there's another view of the building as well.
Alright, I was gonna pass out all these designs for you guys.
And that's pretty much our presentation.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
I have a question. On your, your streetside renderings of your, the nice visuals.
Yes.
Is that all staying within the same footprint of that little room that's there now?
Some of them are.
Yes.
Currently Blake's design, it cuts down on some of the sides.
Right.
And then on, was it Justin's that completely took it out maybe 10 or 15 feet of the room?
Yeah.
But for the most part, all the other designs do keep that footprint. It just adds on.
So it's either, it's either within or less?
Yes.
Because I think there's some issues up there with excavation and that would be a problem. It had to be expanded to outside the perimeter of the existing footprint.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Knowing that you've worked on this so long now, and I know that you've given us these design concepts on the outside, can you tell me what you really felt when you walked into the Legion Hall and had to look at that building and think about it in terms of office space? I know we've talked about it, but could you tell the public why you've gone with this modern concept inside? Because of what you did encounter when you walked in there, a big open room? And how do you make that into office spaces? And how did you come up with that idea?
Well, at first we had, we had to throw around designs and like concepts of what we wanted to do. And then after we figured that out, we decided to just go with the simple four, like basic floor plan of different offices and cubicles and stuff like that. And after seeing what the actual building looked like, it helped us figure out what we wanted to design and figure out how we were gonna design it. And it really helped seeing what the physical building would look like, so.
I have a question. Is this the first time you folks have worked on a building of block building like this that was pretty austere when you first got there and had to change the, do it? Or have you worked on other older buildings like this in the past?
This is the first time I've really worked on a brick and block building. I've had some masonry background and I enjoy it, but it's, it's a lot more time-consuming and intimidating than just framing. But this is, it's been a challenge, like just, it's going to be a challenge, but it's gonna be one that I'm gonna really enjoy. But so far, all we've been doing is demo and assisting some of the other shops, such as Electrical and Painting Design with the tasks that they have. But I'm looking forward to it.
Plumbing's done a great job there too. I know the electrical, he has done a hell of a job with all the lights. Made some great progress.
I'm kinda getting antsy though. It's been, me and my crew have been really just taking out cabinets and appliances and we wanna get down to the nitty-gritty.
Can you guys explain how you actually are the people who really help move a whole project forward? Because when we walked into this place, I think a lot of people in town of Millville remember what Legion Hall has looked like in more recent years. And now with this conceptual drawing, what do you think has happened?
I would say like, really, I would say something, it's like really, really big. Like when I first got there, it was like this place, like you could tell that like really nobody was there, you know? And now that we've pretty much done all of this, you could tell that it's, hopefully it'll come out looking great and that it'll, hopefully everybody in the town will enjoy it.
It's, I'm not too sure. I can't really give a good statement as to what I've seen so far. I've only been out there a handful of times, but I think it's gonna be a nice, a nice change, but yeah.
I mean, this is a building where you walk in, there's almost nothing in there, but from prior experience, we worked on another project before this, our shop. And we know that just look at it, figure out the space, build it, and then just start piecing things together. And then something will come to mind. It's never as bad as it really looks.
A big part of construction is timing.
Yes, sir.
What do you anticipate your timeframe is for this project to get it to be a functional town hall?
That I'm really not too sure on. I've, since we've really gotten the gutting down, I haven't been out on-site as much and have been consulting with my instructor slash foreman. But I know that the board really wanted to get done as soon as possible, within the next few months. But I know if, weather permitting, I know this season is supposed to be quite nasty like 2014, so that may alter us, like some of the constructional exterior aspects with the block and such, and especially the roof, because it's gonna be very difficult and frankly not safe for us to be up there with three feet of snow and a layer of ice.
Well, part of planning a project like this is determining what the best time to do this is too, and what order to do the process.
Yes. Well, once we get the green light, I believe we will start directly on the roof and as much as the exterior as we can. But I really can't give a clear answer at this time. I'm sorry.
I think too, the students would concur with their instructor that the main mission has been to focus point us on the inside of the building because we need that to be done first and there are a lot of other things that could be done over time. You know, that would make those drawings and renditions you did a full reality. But there's been, because of these schematics that are to scale, it has allowed the other divisions within the school to come in and already start doing the electrical, the plumbing, and all of that. So your work has been so visionary and eye-opening for us that we even were quite dismayed about the choices we might have had in town to move our town hall operations. And I wanna thank you for opening our eyes up to what could be really very possible. And all of you had walked in and looked at this big room and looked at this little drawing my husband and I put to scale, and then you made this. And it just, it's really been a wonderful experience and we wanna thank you for all of that.
That being said, sir, to answer, or to come back to your question. That being said, I actually do agree that some of the more, the fronts can be done over time. But definitely for this to be functional, we will start directly on that breezeway.
Yeah, with a tight shell and a comfortable workspace is what you need to start.
Yeah, accommodations will be made as time's available, but the roof patching in that breezeway is top of our, top of our list.
There's one other piece that I think that the selectmen would appreciate seeing that they might not have yet, and that's the selectmen meeting room. Because we're here in the senior center right now because we no longer have a meeting space. It's not just the selectmen that meet there, it is a meeting room for our planning board and our finance committee. Maybe if you can show us the 3D version off to the right of that, that would be great. That is currently what, the bar, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to say. It's just a different approach. Anybody who's been in the, inside the Legion Hall is, will be very much surprised by the transformation, but this is currently the bar area.
Yeah. Actually, right where those chairs are in the main straight section is where the bar, the bar actually is.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Right where the meeting table is.
Yes.
Right where the lasers, that's where the bar is or was.
Yeah.
But, so that's all gonna be taken out. We removed the mirrors, the alcohol stands. Plumbing went in, got out the soda work.
So this is pretty much where the selectmen will sit, right here. And then people in the audience would probably sit right here. And then these are like.
Office partitions.
Yeah, office partition, computer. And then this is like the door to the bathroom, so there's like a little hallway between the meeting room and the bathroom, so people don't interrupt the meetings as well, so.
The other thing I did wanna mention too, there was four underbar refrigerators and they did have the refrigerant taken out before you can take those apart and remove them and so forth. And BVT was very nice to come up with HVAC and they come out and took all the refrigerant out. So now we can move those things. And that took place like last week. So again, thank you for helping us out with that. That was, we had a little bit of a problem there. Now you guys come and say, we can do that. We appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
Going into our town meeting on November 30th, we have a lot of townspeople who are getting to see these particular renditions for the first time on television. And what would you say, you know, you would encourage the town to think about after you've done these drawings? Because we're asking them to support us moving right now into the very small confines of the police station into, into some more space that you've helped create design. Would you encourage them to, to think about this and to be able to support this?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna thank you all for your excellent work. It's really appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You will all be able to see yourselves on YouTube. Tim will put that up and you get to see yourselves and we know that you've been.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, we will, yes we will.
Thank you, thank you.
No, no, that was great. Well, we were then going to.
Hello.
Hi.
How you doing?
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you, everybody. Take care.
My knees don't feel any better. Appreciate it.
Okay, you as well.
I'm cooking up a snack.
Welcome to the Board Selectment Meeting of November 21st. It's now 7:38, and I declare this meeting open. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on the agenda, uh, second, second, second point is the announcements. We'll be having a special Fall Town Meeting on November 30th at the elementary school, and we invite, if many of you can attend that meeting, to be there to vote on seven very important warrant articles.
Yes, and that will be at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
And we are encouraging people to come. There is a warrant that we'll be discussing a little bit later in terms of the number of articles. We have a seven article warrant that includes obviously the information that you heard tonight with regards to the town hall, and we have other articles that we'll just quickly review that would be important later on in the town administrator update. But I would encourage anybody who believes the, the future of this town is important, and whether you're part of a board or committee or not, we need you there. We need you there to help us continue the progress that we're making with, with regards to this town.
Tonight, we have the minutes of November 7th and November 14th to review and sign.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of November 7th and the minutes of November 14th as written.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye. Sheen adding. Public forum, anyone wish to say something? Hearing, none. We'll proceed to correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packets, you'll see some more correspondence. I know in the past, I've shared correspondence with you with regards to the Heritage Corridor, and through some efforts with the Heritage Corridor and the Mass DOT, they have reached out to us as a community that has the bike way, the greenway that runs through the heart of the community, that we would be eligible to receive some additional bike racks and fix-it stations that they plan to put, not necessarily on the bike way, but in other areas of the town. We would be responsible for being able to at least install them, but we basically would only be paying for shipping. I would suggest that they continue to connect with our chairman of the Recreation Committee, but also to think about potential areas where you would think would be a good place for them to be, so that we could encourage destinations inside our community off the bike way. Basically, this is a reimbursement type of thing. There are almost $600 worth of bike racks. They have researched the type of bike racks and fix-it stations that are very durable and aesthetic. They're gonna share that with us, but it looks like now that they're gonna be proceeding, and we'll be able to, to do something with that if, if we continue in that positive way.
It'd be a nice addition to the bike way.
The next correspondence is again, only because we had that blip with the water quality, you know, back in the spring, I'm sharing it with you that, once again, the water quality results for the MES school is again showing signs that we're absent for any particulates and microbes that would be important to report. So today, I'm glad to report, that's good. And it has been for all of these months. The other thing was something in the reporting, and that was taken care of, and so I just thought it was important to share with both parents and others in the community, that that is continuing to show negative results for any kind of particulates or microbes. Then we have a, another announcement so, as well as correspondence, and that is our region and the Blacks, I mean, the, both the Worcester and the Blackstone Valley Chambers of Commerce have, had been awarded a U.S. Department of Economic Development and Administration had awarded this region a grant to do a comprehensive economic development strategy or SENS. That means money that will come to our region for economic development planning, and they are having their outreach meetings. One is coming up on December 1st for our area, and it will be from 3:00 to 5:00 PM up at the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce. This is quite important, because it's not just for one community, but what it is, is as you actually articulate the importance of a strategy or key development areas in your community, they will look to help actually fund those things that moves the entire region forward. So if we're strong enough in articulating an area that is important to us, like a priority development area that's down along the river, that might be something that becomes targeted for federal funding. So I think it'll be important, I know the town planner is planning to attend, as well as I, and I will hopefully be able to bring back some information, but any of you that would like to come, just let me know as well. But I think it's good to be able to be a partner, and I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Next is.
Yes.
Who's this? Chamber of Commerce?
Uh, that is the same one. That was what I was just, yeah, that was a little bit of extra information, yeah. It'll be the new business will be the next piece.
Okay, new business. We, that was the precursor to this meeting. The students at Blackstone Valley Tech and their instructor have put together a presentation, and you'll all be able to view it when it gets, probably tomorrow, on YouTube or Facebook.
Yeah.
At the channels.
In the channels.
In the channels. Awesome.
Okay, we do have a Department of Energy Insight Authorization, and I would ask the board to approve my signing to allow members of the CMR PC access to our energy website, so they could assist us with reporting on the result of the first phase of our grant, which in addition will make us eligible for competitive grant, pursuing competitive grants going forward. We, at this juncture, we really appreciate CMR PC's assistance in doing that. So I would ask for a motion to allow me to sign a letter of authorization to the CMR PC to have access to the Mass Energy Insight website and database.
So I'll make a motion to allow the chair to sign the letter presented in front of us, so that CM, CMR PC may have access to our energy information resources.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to add that this board took an important step when I came aboard in June, and that was within just a few days after having looked at the fact that we were looking to apply for different grants. This was in a grant that actually we had been awarded, and it's a $5,000 grant, and I want to thank the chairman and also Trish in the Police Department who've worked very close with the green communities for all the work they did on the first phase. What this was trying to do in partnership, as grants get more and more competitive, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has taken on a new role on helping small towns in particular handle both the assistance with the next round of applications, but also the reporting and/or administration. So this reporting piece will be very helpful, so that the committee going forward can focus on, one, the application piece, and then hopefully getting the next phase of grant funding. This has been a wonderful addition to the town in terms of having the green communities do all of its work. This is just a small piece that will assist us, but nevertheless, it was a $5,000 grant. So I want to congratulate this committee board in front of me for having authorized me early on to go into an opportunity to actually apply through the Metta Grant Program. And so today, we had another piece of good news for the town. And that's what this letter is, and it will be helpful to the committee going forward.
Old business. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Call the board.
All right. Roll.
Aye.
There you go. That's all.
Old business? Selectment's forum?
No, just a reminder, we did get confirmation for the Centennial. The post office will be stamping on December 3rd, any post mail that is brought to the post office on that day, not in your mailbox, not dropped in the blue box, because they handle differently. Anything brought down that day, Christmas cards, whatever you want, will be stamped with the Centennial stamp, one day only event. And if you can't make it, the police station has, Trish and the chief are going to have a box out the week after Thanksgiving, where people can come down during business hours, because we don't want anything to get lost or misplaced. And they can drop them in the box during, and then during the business hours, and we will, the Centennial committee will bring them over on that Saturday morning for anyone as a courtesy. So just want to keep that out there, as I still wear that second hat for a little while longer.
Anyone else? Moving forward to the town administrator's report. First article is, discussion will be on the town hall update.
Yes, just briefly, we already have been apprised at a number of different junctures about the work that's being done, and tonight, we had a great presentation. I just want to inform you of two things. Today, the insurance company had picked an actual construction firm to come out and assess the building itself, and to start to put together what they consider to be costs that would be related to actually repairing and restoring the building. Remember, we only had a structural engineering report that told us the causes and what they believed had led to the collapsing of the truss and the outside walls. So Rebuild X is the name of the company. They will be back on more than just today's occasion, and I'll keep you informed with that. Having said that, as you know, we've been having ongoing negotiations with the insurance company, and I would hope that after town meeting or sometime within the next week or so, we can have, that if we could schedule an executive session to discuss some of the things that are gonna come out of this report and a few other things that will be important from a negotiating standpoint, I think an executive session would be order, and we could go forward with that.
Can you, please, within months of December?
Uh, yeah, I mean, obviously, we have it. I mean, it would be great to even do it December 2nd, 1st, or the, the following Monday, well, that'll be December 5th. So if we could do it before the next meeting and/or if, if I feel the need, I'll let you know if I can do it when we have the next meeting. But just be on alert, if I ask you for that, it will be.
Be the first December meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
There's one question that I have. Our temperature is, this morning, in my house was about 30.
In the house?
No, no. At my house.
You gotta pay your oil bill. Seamus the dog has got a little scarf on downstairs. It was snowing last night, so yes. Yes.
So we really gotta consider closing that building down and draining it.
I agree.
And the administrator indicated to me there were no contracted to do that, that work. And I imagine that's.
Yeah, initially, I had the, the chief make sure that the settings, you know, because we knew we were gonna have cold weather just for the next so many days, would make sure that nothing would happen to the building. But as far as, I don't think it's just the sort of decommissioning of the boiler that's important, there's some other things that I think are gonna be important, and we're gonna put together a punch list, and I would appreciate any of the members of the, one member of the board, if they want to be part of that. I know John has expressed interest, or Roland, because of your background, if you wanted to be part of that, so that we can make sure that we go through, it's not every day you decommission a building, so, you know, there are a number of steps, and I want to make sure that we, you know, don't do one thing that'll affect the building adversely in another way, but methodically do that. But that is the number one thing that we did, I've already looked into, and I know that's important. So I would just suggest somebody who would like to work with us on that, and, you know, either.
We'll let the experts.
Pass it by. Either one of you interested, I don't want to nominate Roland or, or John for the job, but.
I think both are what I, I don't know. We can do it together. We'll give a list and give it to you.
Okay.
We'll both give you a list.
Okay.
What we have to get done to do.
Thank you for volunteering, gentlemen.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The next on the list I have is a town meeting review. I just wanted to update you that as of this evening, we have kept on our schedule for necessary meetings that we have to have in advance of the town meeting on the 30th. Last week, on Thursday, we met with the Capitol Planning Committee, which had reviewed the articles on the warrant that you had approved on the 14th, and they met on the 17th. And they reviewed the articles that were under their purview, articles one through four that had.
Financial.
Yeah, had financial, but more capital implications. And I'm happy to report that they favorably recommended all four, with the understanding that we may make motions on the floor of town meeting, depending on how we continue to negotiate with both insurance and other aspects related to financially being able to cover the costs that are gonna be required for us to actually restore and repair and renovate the Legion Hall. So articles one through four, they recommended favorably. And tonight, the FinCom had their public hearing, Finance Committee had their public hearing, and their regular meeting, and they had also given favorable recommendations as written of the articles and the warrant, understanding there may be slight changes relative to the financial pieces of it, and those motions would be made on the floor. And they had recommended articles one through four, and they also recommended Article Six, which has to do with the aligning of the non-criminal penalties for zoning violations, because they felt it had an implication financially for the town in a positive way. So all of those articles, they favorably recommended. to be part of that so that we can make sure that we go through, it's not every day you decommission a building. So, you know, there are a number of steps and I want to make sure that we, you know, don't do one thing that'll affect the building adversely in another way, but methodically do that. But that is the number one thing that we did, I've already looked into and I know that's important. So I would just suggest somebody who would like to work with us on that and, you know, either one.
We'll let the experts.
Pass it by.
Either one of you interested, I don't want to nominate Roland or John for the job, but...
I'd look at both. You can do it together. Yeah, people listen to you.
Okay.
We'll both give you a list.
Okay.
What we have to get known to do.
Thank you for volunteering, gentlemen.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The next on the list I have is a town meeting review. I just wanted to update you that as of this evening, we have kept on our schedule for necessary meetings that we have to have in advance of the town meeting on the 30th. Last week, on Thursday, we met with the Capitol Planning Committee, which had reviewed the articles on the warrant that you had approved on the 14th, and they met on the 17th. And they reviewed the articles that were under their purview, articles 1 through 4 that had...
Financial.
Yeah, had financial, but more capital implications. And I'm happy to report that they favorably recommended all four with the understanding that we may make motions on the floor of town meeting, depending on how we continue to negotiate with both insurance and other aspects related to financially being able to cover the costs that are going to be required for us to actually restore and repair and renovate the Legion Hall. So articles 1 through 4, they recommended favorably. And tonight, the FinCom had their public hearing, finance committee had their public hearing, and their regular meeting, and they had also given favorable recommendations as written the articles and the warrant, understanding there may be slight changes relative to the financial pieces of it, and those motions would be made on the floor. And they had recommended articles 1 through 4, and they also recommended Article 6, which has to do with the aligning of the noncriminal penalties for zoning violations because they felt it had an implication financially for the town in a positive way. So all of those articles, they favorably recommended. And again, I want to thank you for having put together an approval of that strategy for what we were seeking, not only in terms of articles, but in terms of the way we might proceed financially. And that has also been embraced by those two committees. Yes, very quickly, the, we, in our last meeting on the 14th, when you were approving the warrant, we also discussed the rates that were coming in now that we have an approved municipal aggregation agreement with Colonial Power. They had done the research for us and they had an open session of online sort of bidding that was coming in from everything from hydro power to standardized products. It's been a tremendous learning experience about that. But I have learned an awful lot and you designated me to actually sit in and determine what might be best to proceed. This municipal aggregation did not mean that we had to actually change provider for the whole town and had we opted this time to go with a different provider other than National Grid, the Colonial Power people would have gotten into a whole cycle of educating the public and doing that. I had chosen after careful review of the six and 12-month options that were provided, that the best option at this moment still was National Grid. And so because of that, the public doesn't have to do anything at this point.
I just want to make the point that residents are still able to select other energy providers on their own. Should the town, you know, in the future, go with Colonial Power and the residents want to opt out and opt into with Colonial Power, there, I just give you a heads up that there is, there are penalties on the contract if you don't fulfill the six months usage or whatever. That's just one cautionary note that I bring up at this time.
But this way, there won't be any changes. People will be able to not have to engage in that. But going forward, there'll be another review in about, this particular rate goes for the next six months or to the end of April, and then we'll be revisiting it again. So it's meant to have you attuned to the fact that there's competition and that rate might change to benefit the town for a much longer period of time. But I felt that when looking and when we reviewed it, there wasn't a large amount of change. That would have, I think, been substantially good enough reason to put the town through that and then come back to it in another few months to do it. So I did share that with the chair before making that decision, just so that you know.
And this wouldn't be an opportune time to make this situation complex when we need National Grid's assistance on Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, the other two things I had on the administrative update was just the Mass Works. I wanted to let you know that because some people had understood that there was already surveying that was taking place on Central Street. There were a number of people, including some people who live on Central Street, that had come out and saw little red dots already put in, saw people working. So that is being done as we go through before the terrible winter months come because there's an awful lot of surveying that has to be done and that is already underway and so that's a good thing to report. I also wanted to let you know that our highway surveyor, along with the engineering firm and myself, as we looked at the original $1 million Mass Works grant was going all the way up to Providence Street for the types of improvements they were going to make, one of the things our highway surveyor and myself had recommended that if we could go all the way to the border because of the fact that redoing that bridge, how could we include that even if it wasn't included in the $1 million or how could we stretch that $1 million? So we're in the process of looking at that because the goal would be to get it all the way to that bridge. And so that's a goal. I just want you to know that we're working on that. We may tweak certain aspects of the contractual arrangement with both the engineers and Brian is making sure that we're going over that dialogue with the engineering firm. But it's still early, but we really want to do that. So if we can make it happen, we're going to make it happen.
Is North Smithfield, I know they're working on the bridge, but are they doing road work up to the state line?
Yeah.
You mean Rhode Island coming this way?
Yeah.
I would imagine they are doing some of, because usually, they don't just do a bridge.
Just because I know right at the town line, there's a pipe, a drainage pipe. I mean, I walk it often, so, you know, I see it a little more up close than just driving. But the puddles that form right there at the state line, it's really just a little dip. It's not a major thing. But over time, if you're going to have a beautiful road, and I agree, have it go there, but there may need to be some talk with North Smithfield because we can go to that line, but if they don't do anything, the wear and tear based on the water and how it sits, that end is going to, you know, not last as long either. So it's just some consideration to think if North Smithfield or the state of Rhode Island is going to go right to the state line on that.
I think when we're...
It'd be worth a while to speak to our highway severe.
Yeah. I think that would be exactly what I would want to do if Brian should be attuned to that. And I think if we can find out some more information about what they're going to do, maybe I can have him come and report that to you so that we can have a better understanding. So thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah.
And the last thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is just a quick information about the fact that we put together another grant application, both myself, working with our town planner. We had a very short window. Unfortunately, I don't know what's this year, is very short windows to actually apply for certain grants like the Mass Works, but hopefully, knock on wood, we'll be successful again. But this is through the, oh, knock on wood, yes, there you go. This is through the Community Compact. They opened up a new possible grant program for us that is called the Efficiency and Regionalization Grant Program. And the deadline was last week. And we put together an actual application after myself speaking with the town manager in Uxbridge. We've been looking at ways that we can both benefit one another and both of us suffer from, I'd say, inadequate amount of hours that we can provide for planning services. We know we have not had a master plan in this town. Uxbridge does not have a master plan either. We know that our zoning laws have not gone through a zoning diagnostic, probably ever. I don't know how far back that goes. But our town planner and I sat down and said, if we were to put together some kind of proposal, where do we have areas that we share in similarities with the town next door? And so we put together the proposal. I spoke to the town manager there. Nothing ventured, nothing gained, so this would be a proposal that I'll go into more detail on another night if we so lucky to receive it and maybe have our town planner here also to talk and answer questions. But just so that you know, it is a proposal for $185,000. I think it's a solid proposal and it would include not only the creation of a master plan using outside resources because it is a very intensive process. You know that even in a part-time limited capacity, it's really such a tall order and even our current town planner recognizes that. But this is also, the master plan's the backbone for the town to get other grants. And the longer that we don't have it, the less I can actually really go to bat to try to get additional funding. And whether it's through open space and recreation, we need to have that plan that's derived from the master plan to be on file with the state, but we can't even access parks and recreation money. And so those two components are part of this grant and if we can do it and go out and get a proposal together jointly with another town, the collective power together helps lower costs, we might be able to realize it. And if we can get some grant assistance to pay for it, all the better. So that was submitted and keep your fingers crossed. Hopefully, we'll be able to realize that.
Now, our master plan, we've had meetings on this.
Yes.
And we switched planners, but we seem to have been in a good spot to complete it. Is that, where are we now?
I think one of the things, you have sections of it written and I think there are pieces of it that people individually feel really strongly in support of and others feel that it's, it doesn't meet the mark of where you would want a true full master plan that's been vetted by the community. So I think that piece of it is, anything we have done is going to be helpful potentially. And if you really need the pieces of it to be completed and make it strong enough so that it withstands the scrutiny of outside funding agencies, I mean, that's the key. If you want to put together a master plan that might be not as strong, then you run the risk of not being able to fundamentally move in a direction where you get funding. And my job will be to make sure we have a very strong master plan that meets the needs of the community and that is well received by other agencies that are going to look at it and say, yes, this is really, you know, going to be able to hold up and give the community the direction so that, yes, we'll be willing to fund certain aspects of that. So I think even the town planner understands that we need more of that. But like I said, it's a preliminary. We had a small timeframe to deal with. We put together, I think, a solid proposal and we'll see where it goes, you know. And once we find that out, then we'll have a better idea of what kind of proposal we would put forward.
But our planner is still working on ours.
Right.
Well, having just come in, yes, I mean, she's going through our bylaws, she's going through all of that, but this is just one piece of it. Because she wants to spend her time really, you know, working with the planning board, which I think is great, but she also recognizes that these other pieces are really important. So she's in the process of reviewing our zoning bylaws for areas, whether it's marijuana facilities, dispensing and/or other areas that relate to how we accept streets and all kinds of things that are important to development plans. So she's on the mark for it and she's hoping to have some of those things that she's going to bring before the planning department, but this is just another piece because this doesn't affect just the planning department, it affects the whole community. And I know your board has expressed interest in also having, you know, a bona fide master plan. So this is one way that we might be able to get some resources to do that.
I think we could wait a couple more months. You know, this has been an eight-year project and get a chance, you have a good plan.
Yep, so that's it. And that concludes my administrative update.
All righty, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we have minutes to sign. And I just want to announce that our next regular scheduled meeting will be December 5th.
Yes, I do have one other thing. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that the town hall employees informed me I haven't been here right before the holiday of Thanksgiving. We're usually open on Wednesday evening for office hours. And I guess in the past, your board has allowed them to close.
Yes.
And so I just wanted to make sure if that was your wish as well as, I think, some of the employees, that would be good.
You don't need to...
I would be willing to, no, just saying, if we needed one person to be there, you know, during that time, I don't know who would be paying their taxes on Thanksgiving, but there could be.
Nah, they're baking pies.
I know. I know that. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I know the employees would be very grateful for that.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, all right.
So let's sign.
This is your letter to sign. And... And while they're signing, wishing you all a very happy, happy Thanksgiving. I know I'll see and talk to you beforehand, but to the public and to those people who serve on our boards, Mr. Finn and Mr. Corvello and Mr. Willett and our audience, and our very able Mr. Labonte, who, oh my goodness, I almost forgot.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Not that I forgot. I've seen some of the pictures. A beautiful, beautiful wedding recently and I think that that was a beautiful thing and he came right back and launched himself into work for the town. So I want to say thank you, Tim, and happy Thanksgiving to you and your bride.
I fixed the channels on the morning of rehearsal dinner.
Uh-huh. Now, talk about dedication. I don't think, I don't know if you want to tell your wife that, but that's okay. We'll let you, you know, it's a secret. Right, it's our secret here on public television.
As my mother said, you don't tell your spouse anything.
Congratulations to you both.
Roland can sign this one, can't he?
No.
No, no, because he wasn't on at that meeting.
No.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Row.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.